Also, the shop with the cop. Where police and police and military people from all over our region um take um children that have very little means um and take them through Walmart and shop with them for Christmas. And it is a very, very, it's a really meaningful thing to see the buses of all these kids, they come in and then they they they're taken with the cops, take them and they take them into the store. They have a, I think it's a hundred or a hundred and twenty dollar budget or something, and I can't remember exactly what the number is. And they they shop with the children for Christmas. And um it that is a really amazing thing. And I know our police department has, the police departments all over the county have been involved with this for years. So if you want to see something pretty remarkable, show up at Walmart about three o'clock on Saturday and watch the buses show up and watch the kids go in with with everybody to shop. So remember what time, what, remember this is the really wonderful time of year, Anne. So anyway, that's all my comments, and I'm kind of rambling. So um why don't we go on to the next, unless there's any further comments? Let's go on to uh Boarding Commission and Outside Agency Reports. Mr. Newell, Ms. Livedall? Mr. McVeigh? No? Mr. Eckert?
Uh yeah, so I had attended that conference and Pam had asked me to give a kind of an update on it. And I've been kind of holding off to where I'll hear, but um it's getting kind of far away. So I'll just give a quick one tonight and Pam can watch. Um so it was the it was the Engage twenty five, twenty twenty five conference held by the Rental Housing Authority of Washington, which folks don't know, it's a, it's an organization that represents small and mid-range landlords. Um and so it was mostly focused on housing, rental housing, there was a lot of, there was um uh industry folks there, there was legislators there, uh and um and folks in the investment community. And um the overall theme I got from the sessions I went to is that invest, development investment in the state of Washington is way down um across the state uh between the um the new taxes that were put into place for the last legislative session, the implementation of rent control and some instability that the investors are seeing. Big investors have fled the state. Um they're going to Idaho and they're going to the southeast. Uh one of the reasons I said instability, like we talk about permit timelines, um one of the slides I took a picture of. Average process for uh permits in King County right now is twenty four to thirty six months. Whereas in Austin, Texas, it's nine to twelve months. Charlotte, North Carolina, nine to eighteen months. So investors are headed that direction, they're not investing here. Um now, what was really good that came out of all that is when I would share what we're doing and the numbers we have of units going up in the city of Polesbo, especially with our size, we are very clearly an outlier to the positive. Like I I had a lot of people saying, what are you doing? How are you achieving that? So with the legislators, I basically shared, please don't rock the boat, leave us to our devices because we're clearly doing something right. Um another session I attended that was really interesting, it was um on manufactured home parks. And uh to my surprise, the presenters had two companies presenting who between them are building three new manufactured home parks in the state of Washington, which, you know, we've all been told isn't happening anymore. Um but they're actually building uh three new facilities, one of them is in Squim, and that's by the same company that owns the Polesbo MHC. Uh so it was interesting talking with them. Uh this is a fifty five and up community built from the ground up, uh not cheap. Uh all said and done, by the time you buy everything and have it put in place and um they're still in the four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollar range. Uh but they're looking at a lot of folks that are moving out of their homes, selling, using that equity to move into manufactured home parks. So it was very interesting. Uh and then just on top of that, there was a report that just came out that went with it. Um thirty-three percent of the commercial office space in Seattle right now is vacant. With zero downtown Seattle with zero new dollars being spent on new construction. So just, just the picture of that market is um, it's a little bleak, but the upside is ours is is looking really good. So I was glad I went and uh made some interesting, had some interesting conversations. And the folks that threw it, when I shared with them some of the stuff that Heather gave me to take along, they said they want to come to Polesbo and have lunch and see what we're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Eckert. Uh Mr. McVeigh, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh there's been
Oh, you're not Mr. McVeigh?
Oh, sorry, sorry. Well, I
He grabbed me, so go ahead.
Um I should give a brief report on the Transportation Policy Committee meeting I attended of the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council uh back on November twentieth. Uh kind of big news coming out of that committee, and that is that um there's going to be no um competition for transportation funding uh in twenty twenty six at either the Puget Sound Regional uh Coordinating Council or um, I'm sorry, Puget Sound Regional Council or the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council. Um for a variety of reasons, um at the federal level, um primarily as well as some state issues. But they have decided to take a pause this year on new transportation funding and those competitions that typically would be held in twenty twenty six. So they are suspending that for a year. Um talked a little bit with Diane Linius and some others. We don't think that will impact us a great deal at this point.
We're already funded.
Yeah, um I think the the awards have been given out, there's a two through two thousand nine, I believe, Mayor, is that right? So um these things tend to work quite far ahead. Um but I just wanted you all to know, uh it's kind of an important, uh it doesn't happen very often. Uh apparently it's happened at least once before, they were trying to figure out when the last time it happened was. Um and so uh more about that later, but um we were kind of the first group that um um PSRC uh updated on this. And uh so it's it's going to be kind of a big change and uh we will be adjusting to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McVeigh. Mr. Stern?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh on the note Mr. McVeigh just brought up, do you want to expand as the past president, Puget Sound Regional Council on that delay by PSRC federal funding?
Yeah, you know, politics matter. Okay, really bluntly, politics matter. And um um our state and has taken some pretty progressive views and the federal government is not progressive right now. And um so consequently, um they're looking very carefully at all the federal dollars coming through. I mean, it's really, I mean, you can sugarcoat it a lot of different ways, but that's what's going on. And um so um that's the bad news. The good news is that most of our major transportation infrastructure is already funded, at least the projects. I mean, of course, we would always like an extra three or four million bucks for some future project. But um we're in pretty good shape. Um uh that, but it is, it is concerning. Um and as long as we have this dichotomy between our state government and the federal government, um it, those kind of federal dollars that we're used to seeing um are in jeopardy. There are consequences. So um I'm um, I'm not surprised by this, I'm just glad we got in under the wire. And um so anyway, I'm I am not going to be able to attend Puget Sound Regional Council tomorrow. Um but um I'm sure that they will continue to do their ongoing, some of their ongoing projects that they need to do, they're implementing their transportation plans, their safety plans, et cetera. Um but the the funding will be cut off for a couple of years, probably a couple of years. And but as I said, I'm looking at Josh back there and and I don't see Diane and Charlie and saying, we're funded for, yes, the thumbs up. So my understanding is we got in under the wire. What I'm really worried about more than this is the HAP dollars. I see Dean Nail, did Dean, did that, did the HAP dollars come through? Not yet. Okay, they, we have not received the money for our housing choice vouchers for housing Kitsap. And that's a big deal. And that's, that's people having to make uh rent payments um with they don't, without having funding to help support them. This is the poorest of the poor, these are people that are living at, you know, thirty percent and below adjusted median income. That's who we're talking about, these are, these are people that don't have a lot of money. There, there's private landlords involved. Um uh there are our housing projects at housing Kitsap, the Nordic cottages is a classic. That, that, those dollars, if they do not come through, uh Dean, have you heard anything more about timing on this at all? Okay, please keep us in the loop, okay? Yeah, tell others to keep us, Dean Nail is a Development Director for Housing Kitsap. So I, you, that's the, that's the biggie, that's the really scary one to me. Um so politics matter, folks, and we get federal dollars, we get a lot of federal dollars in this state. And if, in fact, um they're not dispersing those dollars, there's going to be people that are going to be hurt. And I don't care what side of political aisle you're on, this is just the the reality of what we have going on here. So be aware that this, that there are consequences to political behavior at the local level, at the state level, and at the federal level. So, okay, go ahead, Mr. Stern.
So I was able to attend Puget Sound Regional Council today. In fact, we filled up the uh, Josh Brown says we filled up the conference room for the first time for any board. We had overflowed board members for the Federal Economic Development District, and we had representatives there from the Economic Development Agency out of Washington DC. The point being, Mayor, and picking up on your point, had a long talk with Executive Director Brown. And of course, uh as a metropolitan planning organization, it's a pass-through on federal money. And they have been pursuing, I think with the Attorney General's Office, to get a state waiver that when they pass through federal funding to like the city of Polesbo and other entities that we don't receive the pass-through restrictions that the federal government's trying to attach to this money so that we're not restricted. Uh do you want to expand on that suit that they've been pursuing to protect us?
Uh they joined the suit that was, um they signed onto a lawsuit that was, I think it generated out of King County. Um um I wasn't particularly supportive of it because I believe that sometimes it's best to keep your head down and they chose not to do that. Um so uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's dicey. Um I, I'm a, I'm a little concerned. I think once the cash flow starts to dry up all over the country, a lot of other people are going to be concerned and you're going to see a moderation in policy out of the federal government. But uh I'm, I, my tea leaves aren't that good, I, I'm, I don't know.
So the mayor's referring to like our RACE grant, which is an acronym for our Sound to Olympics Trail Program. Uh and we're reluctant to spend that money to fully understand uh the obligations in it, even though we've been awarded as a group, the cities, that money because there could be a clawback then involved.
I don't know about RACE grants, that's a separate funding stream.
Right.
Yeah.
It it's similar at PSRC, which is federal funds. So we receive a grant of money or a loan or whatever the is on that money that whatever restrictions were suggested by the federal government at PSRC could then be imposed to us without us having seen those stipulations. So they're seeking to have us held harmless.
I, I don't know the specifics of the RACE grant, that's being administered through the city of Port Angeles. And so I, I have not seen the documentation, I can't speak to that, I don't know. I can speak to PSRC, but I, I can't speak to the RACE grant.
So the impact that Mr. McVeigh talked about, we did have Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council yesterday, the mayor attended. And uh Mr. McVeigh was uh reviewing it as the alternate. It has an impact then on the workload. Without that competition, there's considerably less workload. So Commissioner Rolfe has asked for us to re-review what the coming year looks like and is that same workload there in that regard? I already touched on the Puget Sound Regional Council, obviously. And then lastly, in a credit to Councilman McVeigh, uh we had an informal conversation with the uh Port Gamble Skylam Tribe this week uh at Mr. McVeigh's initiative. Uh we were able to sit down with uh our city administrator, Mr. McVeigh, myself, with Amber Caldera, who's the chairwoman of the tribe, Marla Powers, who used to work with us here in the city in the planning department and explore areas of commonality and working together possibly in the future, but it's food for thought, but very similar to what we did with the Suomish tribe already some twenty-five years ago. So credit there to Mr. McVeigh, and I think we'll see some progress on that in the new year. That's it, Madam Mayor.
Might we want to invite them to the um Committee for Bond Road?
We, yeah, in fact, we, the nine topics.
We did that, um thank you, yeah. Uh Rob uh brought it up and let them know what's going on and they'd be welcome to join the effort, so thanks for
Um, I was at Super Tuesday and I, I attended the Kitsap Transit Board Meeting. So I'll tell you about some good news rather than the bad news, okay? They, they allocated about fifty million dollars for various park and rides and construction projects that the transit is going to be, including uh the continued maintenance uh project, maintenance facility up at the north, uh North Kitsap Transit up off of Viking. They're going to build a big uh, you know, basically a bus maintenance facility there and it's about four and a half, five million dollars are going to be spent. So um that was good news, there was good news here yesterday, there was some. And um uh the other thing is uh at Kitsap nine one one, which is our emergency response system, um they're replacing all the radios throughout Kitsap County and that project is moving along really quite well. They have a, really a pretty good new management team, they're doing good work at Kitsap nine one one, which is great because they did have some bumpy times there for a while. So um you know, it was a, it was a full day and it's good to see some of the, some of the um uh regional organizations doing really good work. And Kitsap Transit is one for sure. And uh Kitsap um nine one one is also doing good work, they're, they're doing, is doing good jobs, so. Uh any other boards and commission reports? Okay, seeing none, I got to get back to my agenda here. Uh we're going on to the city administrator and department head comments. How are you, Mr. Gelder?
I'm well, Madam Mayor, uh good evening, Council. Just a couple of things in difference that we have a very full and robust agenda this evening, I'll try to keep my comments short. Um one thing I do want to suggest potentially for the executive session, while the agenda shows fifteen minutes, we may want to, when that's announced, uh announce it for, for about twenty minutes just because we have the transition from here to upstairs, so that that could be helpful. Um also, just in uh one point on the RACE grants, specifically that that injunction had been upheld. So currently, the word is that uh the additional requirements aren't necessarily, aren't going to be uh required of the grant recipients. However, of course, um as part of due process, the federal government has the ability to appeal. Um so we still don't, uh it's still going to take a while for that to play out. And just for the the public's awareness, um finally, that next Thursday, the eleventh of December, our offices will be closed uh from eleven forty-five to one fifteen for our annual employee appreciation luncheon. So um we will not be available to provide services during that time.
Go ahead, Mr. McVeigh.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Mr. Gelder. Um, Rob, can you, can you just confirm for us that, uh I know we moved the um effective date of when we're going to start writing tickets for people who violate the time zones uh in our downtown parking? Are, are we writing tickets now? I, I think that was supposed to start on December first and, and if, if we are, could we make it a little more prominent on the website and elsewhere?
So those, we have extended, I think, uh our warning period by a little bit. It's a, a programming concern that we have, I mean, relative to the citations, but that we are getting really close to that being finalized, so.
Okay, so it didn't happen starting December?
No, but we will make sure that uh we get that up and running as soon as possible.
Thank you for the update.
Okay, is that it, Rob? Okay, um, any, Deb, anyone else, Deb, Jeff? Go ahead.
Evening, Ma- Madam Mayor, council members and community members. Uh very short slide of a fabulous, a fabulous uh senior Thanksgiving potluck that we held at the um our Parks and Rec Center. And this, we had over thirty-five people who attended, which was incredible. So it was filled, it was full of camaraderie, there was all different types of food from all over. There was an entire dessert table, which I didn't find until my third serving, which was great. That, but what's great about this is the camaraderie of people coming from not only our community but outside of our community, because th- this is where people um connect with one another and have conversation. And to give you a sense of over thirty-five folks coming, uh we started doing these only a few years ago and sometimes we'd only have four people and all this food. And it's, it's, if you've had an empty table, you, you can, you could feel it. And this was the opposite, this is why we have Parks and Rec, this is what our city does in, in providing services. We had Fishline there too, providing services and connecting with folks. Um it was fabulous. And if you have a chance to come down, we will keep extending invites, that's a great way to stop by. I also want to give a major thank you to uh Mayor Lex Stern for coming by and saying hello and just talking with everybody. Mayor, I know you've come by in previous years as well. Uh it is a great time and it really shows uh what we do and how we do it. And a big thank you to all our volunteers and our partners, the North Kitsap Senior Citizen Center was there, uh Fishline and a number of others. So it was just heartening to see right before the holidays and um my, my message is I'm, I'm just really thankful with what we have and what we're doing. On the thankfulness note, I'm thankful to Public Works for, for being, uh just about wrapping up the South End uh project. The trees are in, the art's looking really good, so that'll be done before the end of this year. And uh also thankful for our program offerings, we had eighty rec programs this uh in, in November. And the first time we've offered swing dance lessons to wild success, so if you want to learn how to swing dance. Um, that's my, thanks.
Thanks, Jeff. Mike?
Uh to touch on Jeff's comment on the South End Park, hopefully, cross your fingers, if the weather holds out long enough for us, we're going to pour the final uh concrete around the artwork tomorrow and uh that'll be, that'll be done. But uh speaking of weather, we are coming into the winter season, so um like we do every year, we're going to pull the speed bumps up downtown, just when the snow comes, we want to be ready to plow and not have to be chasing that animal around. So we'll do that next week, uh get them pulled up and get prepped and ready for, for winter weather. And then looking at, speaking of some winter weather coming, we have some serious rain coming at us the next week, it sounds like.
King tide.
And king tide. So just everybody be ready, there ain't a darn thing we can do about it. But when it rains heavy like that and we got the king tide at the same time, Mother Nature is a lot stronger than the rain trying to get out, which means the stuff comes out of the catch basin and salt.
And do we have sandbags and stuff down by the senior center and all that?
We, we have sandbags uh up at the shop for, if people want to come and get some and, and, and so.
Okay, Mr. Eckert, go ahead.
Uh yeah, just, you know, uh Mike usually makes a reminder, they don't keep our drains clean, um leaves and stuff, so we help with the flooding. I would say, so when I left the house, I'm meaning two weeks ago, I pulled into my street and uh I think it was three of our cops were there uh clearing the drain on my street because it was all flooded. And when I said, I, I rolled the window down, asked them how it was going, what's up? And they, they said, we're just going to do it ourselves, we're not going to bother Public Works. So just so you know, so they were out there clearing the drain for you to keep it, so they didn't call, bother your guys and but you know, if we keep our drains clean, the leaves go, Public Works and the cops don't have to bother with it, so.
Hey, the citizens, the departments, all that, we're all a big team, we got to work together, so.
Okay, so back to the sandbags, you do have sandbags.
We have some sandbags available up at Public Works, yeah.
All right, um you might want to put out when the king tides are expected.
Uh looking at
I mean, you don't have to do it now, but maybe put it on the website or something?
Yeah, all I was just looking at, it looks like we got some thirteen footers coming this weekend, so.
I know, it's, it's going to be bad, so. Thanks, Mike. Um, anyone else? Lee, I see you back there, deputy chief, no? Okay, Sean, okay? Josh? Charlie? Anybody? Okay, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Okay, so uh now we're moving on to um the consent agenda. Uh all matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the city council for reading and studying and are considered to be routine. This is items eight A through eight D, and I'd entertain a motion, please.
Had a mayor move to approve consent agenda items A through D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mr. Newell.
Newell, aye.
Livedall, aye.
McVeigh, aye.
Eckert, aye.
Stern, aye.
Thank you, Council. Uh we do not have a business agenda, do you guys want to take a ten minute break? Five? No, five minutes, five minutes for, okay, five minutes. We'll be re uh regathering at uh what's that, five forty-two. Add, thank you.
Test. Test, test.
Yep. We'll make sure we turn the volume down a little bit, but you just turn the dial to run the volume.
Perfect. And I think. Test. Thank you. Nice to see you again. We're just going to stand. Thank you. Maybe like, sorry. Okay, council, let's reconvene here pretty quick, okay? Okay. Well, Mr. McVeigh finishes up his coffee making, why don't we go ahead and get started? Okay? For sure. He'll be here in a second.
You bet. Thank you. Good evening, mayor, good evening, council. Since the Housing, Health and Human Services Department has been open, and that's since 2020, one of the issues that's come up many times, both through council member conversations and with the mayor's prompting, has been the issue of where can people who live in their cars park safely at night? It's an issue that's been bedeviling us here in Polesbo for a long time, and the problem has become more pressing as more and more people are living in their cars in our area. We're joined tonight by Leadership Kitsap. They'll be introducing themselves in just a moment. Leadership Kitsap has been working with the city, working with Fishline, working with a local church to come up with this solution to this problem that we've been wrestling with in order to establish a safe park, and we'll be hearing from them in just a moment. For people on council or in the community that perhaps haven't thought about what it's like to live in their car in Polesbo, just to set the stage and lay some groundwork, I've asked our Recovery Cafe Coordinator, Summer Anderson, who works with many people that are living in their cars, to just say a few words about what it's like to be living in a vehicle. Thanks, Summer.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for having us. We're seeing an increasing number of people living in their vehicle, some of them by choice, some of them in the long process of waiting for housing. It takes quite a while to get into shared housing, much less your own apartment. Those lists can be up to years long. But in the meantime, people are staying in their vehicles, struggling to find public restrooms that they can access in the middle of the night is a really, it's not a dignifying experience. And needing access to trash cans. During the daytime, people are also getting shuffled around quite a bit, from parking lot to parking lot, some people getting trespassed and, you know, forbidden to be parking at the library anymore. And so their world just continues to get smaller and smaller. And we just desperately need a place where people can at least get a good night's rest so that they can resume all the things they need to be doing to move their lives forward. Getting interrupted in the middle of the night and shuffled around is not conducive to a good night's sleep. And also, people don't have the funds to continually move their vehicles. Sometimes people's vehicles are on their last leg and shouldn't be driven excessively in the meantime. So I could go on and on about that, but I think you get the picture. It is not fun.
Summer, of everybody that we're working with, the Recovery Center and Recovery Cafe, could you estimate how many people are living in their vehicles?
I'd say at least a half a dozen of our consistent members are living in our vehicles. We see more and more people, you know, I think of it as the interim before actual street homelessness, like they'll move into a vehicle for a period of time, and as soon as that vehicle's gone, then we have, we have tent homelessness, so.
Thank you. I'm going to turn things over now to Leadership Kitsap. Which one of you would like to start? If you'd introduce yourself, please. Thank you.
So hi, I'm Dean L., and here, different capacity tonight. So interesting, all five of us had sat down and started talking about what our Leadership Kitsap project was going to be. One of the things that was kind of uniform is we wanted to find something that we could say, hey, we did that and would be, stand the test of time. We all had our own individual ideas about what it might be. And one morning, as I do sometimes, now that Kim and I are colleagues, I call and interrupt the morning and say, hey, if you had five people that wanted to volunteer for you for a year and had a project you hadn't gotten done, what could happen? You know, what, what, what's something, how could we help you? And safe park came up after a couple of different ideas. And once I pitched it to the team here, they all jumped on and said, yeah, let's do this. So that's how it came around. Here's Richard.
My name is Richard Barley. I am, I work for Olympic College out of the president's office and lucky to work with these lovely people on this project as well. We really all identified with a desire to help our most vulnerable neighbors who might be in transitory situations. And we've identified this program as an opportunity to help facilitate transition into longer term housing. Now, this may be only sort of medium term housing, as we've identified, it takes a long, long time to get into more permanent housing solutions. But we do see this as a way to bridge the gap between a non-existent home and something that may be more medium term in the form of people are able to get in touch with folks if they know where they're going to be staying for a semi-longer term, a term period. The therapeutic courts, for instance, have identified that it's difficult for them to get in contact with people to get them the resources that they need in order to keep moving through some of these programs into longer terms situations. And so we're hopeful that this will be a mechanism to help move people along through those systems in a more efficient way.
So the budget. Will Bruce, and I'm here to talk about the budget. And the budget is very reasonable. It's lower than 10,000 for initial asking, lower than 9,000 for the second year. This is a pilot program. It encompasses the security with cameras, it encompasses the landscape and provides facilities for the folks who are going to be living there for that short period of time. So we've also encompassed some additional funds for emergencies and unforeseen consequences.
And just to be clear, there is a local church here in Polesbo that is offering up their land at no charge, which is making the cost of this project very affordable.
Hi, I'm Jackie, and I just want to talk about the impact that this will have with the community of Polesbo. As you know, the local church is willing to partner with us. And that impact that you guys can have to help a vulnerable community find a way to survive, to move on, to live with dignity, that's the lasting impact that you're going to make on these people and their lives and their families. So, yeah, we look forward to this project.
Hi, my name is Katie Baker. I work at Kitsap Public Health. Mayor Erickson, thank you so much for all your service on the health board, we really appreciate it. And finally, we just wanted to conclude this presentation with thanking the people of Polesbo. You have all continuously welcomed the most vulnerable neighbors into your community with open arms. Your support for the North Kitsap Recovery Resource Center and other programs has changed many lives, and we hope to continue making a difference through the rest program. So thank you all you do for keeping our community safe.
Just another couple of details about the project, and then I'd like to open it up for questions. The budget that you see in your agenda packet for tonight, I think after talking to this group, might actually be a bit high. I'll be coming back to council at the next workshop meeting with a final budget that I think after talking to Dean is actually going to be a little bit lower. I also want to call out the fact that this would not be possible without other partnerships, including Fishline, that will be providing toiletry facilities on site. I already mentioned a local church that's providing the land screening and registration for this program will be through the Recovery Resource Center, so we'll be relying heavily on our staff at the Recovery Center to help make sure that this is an orally membership model and not a model that's just welcoming anybody that's coming in from other communities. We are, we are definitely looking to prioritize the needs of people that we're already working with at our Recovery Center and our cafe, and just make this an expansion of our current services. Happy to help with any questions?
Questions for Kim and him and friends.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Leadership Kitsap. Thank you to Fishline, the North Kitsap Recovery Center, our police department, who are all going to be assisting with this effort, assuming we approve it. I thought my colleagues might be interested in knowing, might be helpful. Safe parking has been a priority that came up out of the STEP Housing Group, some of us are members of, that has been meeting for at least two years, Kim, does that sound about right? So as we were talking about the spectrum of possible affordable housing, be it shelters or other types of facilities, you know, we really felt like could be, this is a pretty low cost way to help some of the most vulnerable. We know that a lot of these folks are already parking at the library, up at Walmart, up at Home Depot, other locations. And so it's not like it's not happening, but currently it's happening without much supervision. And so, you know, Fishline would handle the applications, the background checks, some of the other administrative duties. The Recovery Resource Center would be the main point of referral. The police department will perform regular security checks. And I'm not sure if it was mentioned, but right now, this pilot program, we're talking about five spaces, correct? We talked about five spaces. All right. So.
Or more.
What's that?
Or, or more. We'll start with five.
Okay, I like the idea of starting with five. I just got to tell you, walk before we run.
Yeah.
I'm very supportive of the idea of five. I think it is something that's needed in our community. I think it's the program that's been recommended, that's been put together here by these folks, I think, looks, looks appropriate, looks like it's been clearly thought out. And the budget impact is fairly low, and we do have some funds available. So I'm in support, based on what I've heard so far.
Okay, we have Mr. Eckert and Mr. Newell.
Yeah, I agree with everything Gary said. I think this looks really good. You know, I remember, we talked about this over lunch probably a year ago now, and I'm glad to see it. It went from usings to a plan. So, good, great job. Thank you. Thank you to the team because they're already doing huge amount of great work and their bandwidth is limited, so having an extra team to help them come, take this to a plan is, is what's needed and it's great. My only question, you mentioned about contact and how, you know, it's hard for these folks to be in contact with the resources to move them to the next stage. Will Fishline or the Recovery Center be acting as a focal point then for the agencies to get ahold of them if they're parking in this area? Like, we have an apartment available for you now, like, is that going to be the function that you all take on? Or is this still going to be on the individuals to?
Yeah, the way that we see it working is people, the folks that we're already working with that we know need a place to park would probably be our initial, I mean, really could take up our initial five spots. So people that are regularly, regularly showering, accessing resources at the center are members of the cafe, and we know that they're, you know, good community members and good standing that are going to respect the safe park, the rest park, and use it for its intended purposes while they're moving their lives forward. I think, I think we could fill it up tomorrow. I mean, just with the folks that we have already.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of like, say, so say they're on the waiting list to get an apartment, and they don't have a normal way to be contacted because they don't have a, so will the center act as like a place for, say, Housing Kitsap or somebody to contact them?
Absolutely.
And say, hey, you're, you're at the top of the list, come in?
Yes, yes. The folks that are be accessing the safe park will be working with our peers and have points of contact lined up, for sure.
So we have Mr. Newell and then Mr. McVeigh.
Great to see the initiative to help support those members of our community at their margins. I fully support, we need to do this.
Thank you, mayor. I just, one question on the use of security cameras. Security cameras have been in the news a lot these days. Would I be correct in assuming that since the security cameras are going to be on the church property, that they would not be considered public records and we wouldn't have to deal with public records requests?
That's correct, council member. One of the stipulations that I had for moving forward with this project is that the church purchases and maintains the camera equipment. It is not city camera at all.
Terrific, terrific. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I, go ahead, Mr. Stern. Go ahead, Mr. Stern.
So a question for the mayor. We've contacted WCI A and looked at the insurance liability aspect.
Well, that's one of the things I was going to bring up, which is, are they going to be signing a form or some sort that says, no, this is who I am, these are the rules, I will abide by the rules, that, you know, that we're not responsible for behavior, et cetera, et cetera. So in other words, releasing us, it's the city from any kind of liability and making sure that Emily has looked at the language, is, is that part of this?
Yeah, it's absolutely part of this, but we haven't consulted our attorney without hearing from council. So when the, if council wants to move forward with this program, we will definitely be running our registration form through, through council. I would say, and it's, this is so frustrating because I would like to call out the church and thank the church for its generosity, but I don't want to say where it is, but.
You don't acknowledge where the church is.
Correct, but the church is really assuming liability. This is on their property. They are taking on the rest park and, without saying their name, I just want to say how deeply grateful I am to this church for being willing to take on the liability, the extra work and the risk involved with starting something like this in our community.
Okay, Mr. Stern and then Mr. McVeigh.
I want to give shout out to Leadership Kitsap, about to meet most of you at the retreat up at White Horse. This has got to be a star project that you guys have come up with. I know each group has its own pursuit, but.
It's number one.
Number one. Congratulations on this. This isn't just an initiative, it's leadership, just what the word implies on your group. So I raise my hands to you. Question for Mr. McVeigh, you were on that STEP Housing Program that coordinated with the region and the county, and when it came to safe parking, what were their outcomes and recommendations, looking at it on a countywide, that we could take on this piece of the slice of it?
We were a little surprised. Commissioner Rolfes has been attending these meetings, Christine Rolfes, North End Commissioner. We've had some of the social service and housing folks from the county with us. We were all, I think, a little bit surprised at the lack of safe parking facilities available in the county. There are one or two, and, but not a lot, there certainly seemed to be a need. And, and everybody, you know, we talked with some folks that have done this before and screening, we kept hearing over and over, screening is important, obviously access to restrooms, security where people feel safe, and notifying the police department that people, these people are there so they can kind of keep an eye on things and help when needed. So those were all, we did discuss some other possible locations. We investigated some of those locations with the help of Fishline and others. And, but this seems to be one of the best options in terms of locations. Can I ask a question? Okay. One question, Kim, I know when we first were looking at this, there are quite a few of the current safe, the safe housing programs that exist, oftentimes they will segregate people by gender, particularly because of domestic violence issues. So oftentimes, the five spaces are just for women, for instance. What, what, what is the plan or do we have a plan right now in terms of gender mix of these five spaces?
Yeah, thanks, council member. You have touched upon, I think, the only controversial aspect of our deliberations, and we had a good, robust debate over whether we wanted to do co-ed or single sex parking. Where we all landed on a group is to do co-ed parking because of really one overriding reason. As Summer has mentioned before, these are all people that we're already working with. These are relationships that are already in place. We'll have an idea before placement about the dynamics of putting people in a small space next to each other, and we're able to work proactively to avoid any, any conflicts or surprises or issues. Summer's already said this, but I just want to reiterate it, these, these are our community members. These are, these are people that, that we know and care for. And because of the intimacy of working in a small city and working with a program where we have so much familiarity with people that will be entering the rest park, I think co-ed will not be a problem. I think coed will not be a problem.
Okay, so did you have a question?
Just to follow up. I think there are some solutions that make sense to do collaboratively across the county. There's other times when moving forward on our own is the right thing to do, especially when it's a low-cost initiative to help our specific community. So I think what you'll see is the other members that have been participating to work on their own solutions, but I don't see us generating a collective solution in this space at this time. It would be my read.
Thank you, Mayor. It'd be my suggestion that you plan for success, meaning when the word gets out. And there's so few resources in the county that others are going to be making inquiry, put it that way. So without any prediction or suggestion, plan for success as part of your group and your forward thinking. And then as far, refresh for me the hours that this is open, or are they able to actually be there 24 hours? So could you go over those parameters together?
Maybe I should give us the Leadership Kitsap. Would you guys talk about the hours?
Well, it's.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It's a little open. The church does have other activities that they perform onsite. So they've asked that we do it from 2000 to 5:00 AM, or no, excuse me, 8:00 AM.
9:00 PM to 8:00 AM.
Yeah.
9:00 PM to 8:00 AM. That's right.
Okay, so, so I have one question though, in all seriousness, Kim, just a sec. You know, we need to make sure that this is run by our council. Okay, our legal council, we want a document signed about what the rules are. I mean, I hate to be, I hate to sound negative because I'm, I like the idea, but I also know we had a safe park in Pauls Bow and it went away. So I want to make sure that everybody knows what the rules are here. And that they agree to the rules. And so that we have recourse, we have a way. I don't want to get the church in any trouble. I certainly don't want to get the city in any trouble. I, of course, I think it's a good thing to do. But I also very realistic about the population we're dealing with here. And so I want to make sure that that piece is done before anybody parks anywhere. Okay, all right, we're good.
Yeah, and expanding on your concerns, Mayor. After we have the attorney review it, I would like to wash it through, and I'm sure you've bothered us, our Washington City's Insurance Association.
Oh, we always do that.
Yeah, and it could involve a rider or some expanded. Because even though it's happening on a church property, we're not unoperating without an agency responsibility. The very conversation we're having creates an agency responsibility. So let us not fool ourselves about that, but embrace it fully.
Okay. What I might suggest, instead of coming back to workshop next week, I might suggest a pause. Let me work on an agreement with council and WCI A and the next time I'll come back, I'll have the agreement for you to review.
I think that's very wise. Okay, let's wrap this up. Last question, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up, you said about the hours. But Summer, you also highlighted the need that, you know, moving some of their vehicles too often is a problem. So is it that the individuals are going to have to leave during those hours or their vehicles are going to have to leave? That might be something we need to clarify, unless you are going to answer.
Their vehicles, them and their vehicles.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Thank you all.
Please just keep everybody safe, the clients, the city, the church, everybody's safe, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Leadership Kitsap. Terrific.
Okay, the next step on the workshop is leadership, lease, excuse me, lease extension for Recovery Resource Center and Recovery Cafe. And this is Kim again.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Just to continue our theme and what we're doing at the city of Pauls Bow and at the Recovery Center and Recovery Cafe to help our vulnerable neighbors coming to council tonight. Asking you to review lease extensions for the space, both at the Recovery Cafe and the Recovery Center. My recommendation to council is that we move forward with a two-year lease in the Recovery Cafe and a one-year lease at the Recovery Center. Let me just quickly explain my reasoning. The Recovery Cafe is almost finished with a very significant kitchen project. We're hoping that the kitchen is open in the next couple of weeks. We've made a significant investment in that property and I think it's appropriate for us to stay there for at least the next couple of years. In addition, we have continuing funds from the healthcare authority to sustain some of our operations at the cafe. The Recovery Center is a little bit different. We do not have ongoing grants to pay for Recovery Center. Our current grants will be over in 2026. So without having any sort of ongoing funding sources, I'm a little reluctant to recommend a two-year lease. I think a one-year lease might be more appropriate. I'll also say that in the back of my mind, I am so eager to see what the Saquamish Tribe does with their new OTP in Pauls Bow. My hope is that when that opens, that will assume many of the functions that the Recovery Center currently provides. Happy to help with any questions.
Okay, questions for Quim. Kim, this looks pretty straightforward to me. Any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Drucker.
No, I just, I think the idea of a two-year lease on the cafe is a good one. We, I brought this up, I think it was Gary that also brought up. When we talked about building the kitchen and, you know, that we're investing in somebody else's building and we need a return on that investment. So I think, I think a two-year lease makes sense to at least lock down. We get a few years out of this kitchen before that we have to think about it again. So I like that idea and yeah, I think it makes sense with the center itself, which services are a little more portable that we don't lock in. So I like.
Okay. Mr. McVeigh.
Thank you, Mayor. Kim, maybe it was in the packet, but I don't remember seeing it. Can you share with us the current lease amounts we're paying? And I'm assuming we're looking at some sort of an increase here, how much of an increase? Can you shed a little light on that?
Yeah, the rent themselves has not increased, Councilmember, but the triple N costs of both sides of our operation have increased significantly. So looking at 2026, let's see.
Do they bill the triple net every month?
Triple net is every month and it's, it should be in your packet. Are you able to look at that?
Someone, yeah, apparently it was a late addition in our folder here. So I'm looking at it now, thanks to one of my colleagues.
Thank you.
So.
I have the yearly totals and what I'm looking at, but not the monthly.
Okay, so the lease, pure lease amount stayed the same, but the triple, the triple.
The triple N increased dramatically.
Increased dramatically. Okay.
Makes sense, utilities.
Utilities are very expensive.
Okay, okay. All right. And I think I know the answer to this. This was reviewed by Emily, our city attorney, right?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions about this? Sounds good. Thank you very much, Council. Okay. This up here. Okay, resolution number something or other, agreement to transfer ownership of K-9 Luna. And this is Chief Harding, but I imagine. Hey, Chief, how you doing?
I'm feeling a little better.
Good, good. You want to talk to us about Luna?
Yeah, I just briefly, I'll just explain that Luna is retired from service. We want to transfer ownership of her officially to Officer Keller, who was her handler, and the two of them have formed a very significant bond. And I would just note as well that Officer Keller still has former K-9 Kilo in his household. Even though Kilo's 13, he's doing great. He tolerates Luna. He doesn't like her, but he tolerates her. And they are actually doing quite well altogether. So it's just an official request to make this official that Luna would spend the remainder of her time with Officer Keller and family.
I don't see how anybody can object to this. Does anybody have any problem with this?
I'm just saying that Luna's gone already. That's off-service.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. I understand some of the decisions and the reasoning. And I think, Chief, I asked you this once before, but maybe for the good of the group. Can you, can you give us an update on where we might be with, with having a new drug dog trained in, back in the community?
Yeah, thank you, Council. And that's a great question, timely. We have already reserved training space for February. And we will conduct a process to establish who our new handler would be in early January. So by the end of January, we'll know which officer would take over the K-9 program. And then in February, they would start their training. So all of that will take place early next year. We would hope to have a functional team by early second quarter, given all of the hours that have to be logged and documented.
You know, Chief, one of the things that I didn't get done is that I always did a vision, something what I call the K-9 enforcement leave, which is I believe that every police jurisdiction in this county should have a dog. And they should all be working cooperatively together as a team. And actually discussed this with Officer Keller at length. That might be a nice goal for our police department to see if they can encourage their brethren to go ahead and get dogs. And so to work cooperatively, then we've got a lot of, a lot of drugs coming through our community. And it would be really great if everybody had a dog, just not us.
No, I agree, Mayor. And to your credit, I know that there has been more interest among a couple of agencies in our county. And some have actually begun to establish a drug. So I think your push for that has been heard.
Oh, good. I'm glad that it hasn't gone on deaf here. So maybe that's something you guys all can work on after I'm gone is let's establish the K-9 enforcement leave. I think it's really, really important. So, and I'm, Mr. Stern, go ahead.
Thank you. Chief, what's your characterization of the other departments that don't have a drug dog at the current time? The opportunities and risks that they perceive, are you able to characterize those?
I'm not privy to all of their budget pressures and that might be something that plays in it in terms of trying to establish a new program.
I think it's, I think, Chief, you're right. I think it's simply money. And then that to me just says, it's simply priority, okay? And I think that if we haven't proved something with Luna, I don't know if we ever will. That this is, she, these are really valuable tools. I hate to talk about a dog as a tool. But she is about, in order to, to do this kind of enforcement. And the drug enforcement is at the heart of so much of our crime in this community and we really need to get a handle on. Sorry, I'm on a speech here, but I think she's an asset. She's an asset. Okay, anybody have any problem with transferring Luna? Consent agenda, Chief. We're in good shape.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, the next thing is derelict vessel removal program. And this is you too, Chief. What's up?
We just wanted to report back and the information specifics are in your packet. But we did incur just over $23,000 in expenses for removing one of the derelict vessels from Liberty Bay. We have already submitted for reimbursement. The timeline for that happening hasn't reached conclusion yet. So we can't promise that we'll get that money back. We have taken all the steps we need to, to seek it. And we just needed to acknowledge this in our budget because it was not something we had any hand on. So it would be a new expense and we're asking to be authorized.
Mr. McVeigh.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, is this $23,000 for, for one derelict boat or is it for more than one derelict boat?
No, that's, that was the bill for one vessel.
Crazy. Okay, all right, thank you. No wonder people let them sit out there for a long time.
I think you're seeing the county, the council all going ouch. This is expensive.
Yeah. It needs to happen. I understand we need to, we need to, to deal with it. But boy, that is a huge, that's, it's more than I was expecting, that's for sure.
Mr. Stern.
This could be useful, Chief, in the case of documenting the cost, what was accomplished, what was the nature of the boat? Because we're going to be meeting with the legislature very shortly on some of our derelict authorities, if not the costing of the program. And so the more data we have, the more handy it's going to be when this rolls out in January.
Yeah, we have all the itemized costs that total, that create that total. So we can actually, we'll make all of those available.
Thank you, Chief. All right, and one more for you, let's keep moving, is the police vehicle repair.
So we incurred costs for a vehicle that was damaged. Our insurance policy has reimbursed us already for those costs minus our $1,000 deductible. We just need to acknowledge that we are receiving funds in this case because those also were not in our budget.
So it's, and it's a budget amendment for the cash received from the insurance claim?
Correct.
Any questions on this one? Nope. I think that's it, Chief. You're off the hook.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Next on the agenda is Cross Connection Backflow Prevention Program update. And this is Charlie. Hi, Charlie.
So this is one of the last outstanding items to complete our water system plan with Department of Health. That's I've been working on for the past two years or so. And it's the Cross Connection and Backflow Prevention Program update. This was flagged by Department of Health previously as something that needed to be updated to be brought into compliance. And so that's what we're looking at here. This is one of the components that's really critical for providing safe water to the citizens of the city. It's also required by state law. Cross connection is any potential connection between a source of contamination and our water supply. So that could be something like an irrigation system that has a bunch of chemicals associated with it, or it could be a medical facility or something of that nature. And then backflow is where water would reverse flow due to a low-pressure situation and it sucks contaminants from one source into our water supply. So both things that are really important to prevent from failing in order to keep our citizens healthy and have safe drinking water. We do have an ordinance for our Cross Connection Control Program. It was established in 1993. And so this is an update to that program. This kind of shows, gives you guys an idea of what's going on. We have our water main out in the street and at the right of way, we have a meter. And then in certain cases, we require a backflow device which goes behind the meter. And this is the private side of the system and the public side over here. And there's a bunch of different potential sources of contamination that are required to have backflow devices. It's outlined in the building code. I'm not going to go through all of that, but a lot of potential sources. And what this little device here does is prevents water from going from these potential contaminant sources back into our public water supply. Picture of one here. One of the things with backflow devices is they are required to be tested annually. And so that's something that we'll get into in a minute. But basically, you put a device in, you want to test it to make sure it's actually functioning. And if it's not functioning, you want to know about it so it can be replaced. As I mentioned, this is part of our Water System Plan Update. And in the packet was our Cross Connection Control Program Plan, which was a document that was updated to kind of meet the new Department of Health requirements. We updated the list of devices based on health hazards. And then we also identified the high-use hazards, which require increased protection on the water system. So things like car wash have, it's in the plumbing code, but a car wash will trigger a more robust protection system than your typical commercial building. So that's, that was in there. As far as running a cross connection control program, there's a lot of requirements that are on the city to actually implement and manage as a, as a water purveyor or a public water supplier. One of the things is providing an up-to-date list of all the backflow devices within the city system. And those are privately owned devices that are connected to our system in some manner. So that's a pretty difficult thing to actually track and maintain. We estimate that we got about 1,500 devices within the city. But that's a little bit of a question mark.
Help me to understand the thresholds. These aren't on individual residences typically. At what point does it cross the bar? It's commercial. Is there a size associated with it as well as a use?
So right now we have, so there's two different types of backflow devices. There's premise isolation, which are at the meter. And then there is in-premise isolation, which are at specific fixtures and that's required by the building code. And so for the city, we don't require single-family units to have backflow devices. Irrigation systems get backflow devices and then commercial buildings get backflow devices. And then, oh, good.
So I'm trying to think of typical thresholds that create the need for our code.
So if you have a commercial business, you're going to, at your meter, our code requires you put in a backflow device to isolate the premise.
And the private sector is, it's required as part of the permit to install. They, they need to provide access to the city. Uh, we're providing that inspection service. I would think that would stretch us pretty thin, especially without code enforcement.
So on the building permit side of it, um, we, when we review the building permit, we identify the need for backflow devices. And as part of that permit process, we require that they, so backflow devices have to be tested by a certified tester. Um, it's called a backflow assembly tester, BAT. And right now the city does not have any BAT, um, staff, uh, on, uh, we, we don't have any of the BAT certified staff.
So, so for instance, you have a homeowner that have a big yard and house is built and they're already moved in and la di da. And then said, well, you know what? We're going to put an irrigation system in my, on our yard because we're tired of getting up and watering it. That should have a backbone, right?
Yep. So when they apply for a permit, it'll be one of the requirements to install the meter and a backflow device.
Require is, does that require permit to get to put in an irrigation system? It does.
If it's a separate meter, yes. If they do it off of their commercial residential meter.
No.
It's not going to come to our level.
That's right. That's what I'm, that's why I'm going, what the heck? Because, you know, these houses, we have houses all over everywhere on residential meters that are doing irrigate. We know that because of our water usage in the summer, right? So how do we deal with that, Charlie?
Well, I'd say that, um, it, it's a little bit, it's a little bit tricky. And the, the nuances of the plumbing code. So if you, if you have a single family house and you connect an irrigation system to like a hose bib, um, that, the hose bibs that are installed as part of houses are actually backflow devices. Um, if you have a situation where you're installing a chemical feed system, that technically would then require an additional upgraded device. But we don't require necessarily a permit for someone to modify their irrigation system. As long as they're not touching the meter or the lot, they would just, it's, we don't have a permit for that.
Okay.
If they come in for an irrigation permit and tap the water main, then that triggers the, the requirement for a backflow device.
Thank you.
Um, there's, there's a lot there. There's some nuances and it's, it's hard to track. Um, and so that kind of leads into, um, the next part of it, which is, I'd say the bottom line is we want to protect the public water system. But we were looking to a software solution because right now, um, poor Ryan over in Public Works has, I'm not even joking, a stack of paper about this tall that is all paper records. And we did, we did have a backflow software and Brooks can, uh, give you some idea about it, but I think it was designed for the XP operating system. So it is defunct and non-functional. Um, and so we did look for, we did look for a software solution. Um, we reached out to three different companies and basically asked them for, to answer a list of questions, as well as do a one hour demonstration and, um, had some folks from Public Works, we had Brooks attend and participate. Um, but we looked at, uh, BSI online, Swift Comply, and then Vepo Cross Connects. Um, and I'd say the cross connection management software platform is all very similar. There's not a lot of differences between the companies. But ultimately we went, uh, and we're recommending Vepo Cross Connects as the solution to, to implement. And, um, one of the main reasons is actually consistency with local agencies. So KPUD has used Vepo Cross Connects for a few years now and Banbridge Island is on the, uh, in, in the, or in the process of implementing, um, or in the implementation phase of acquiring that software. Um, and so just backflow assembly testers are usually pretty local outfits. Um, there's some regional, you know, there's a few in the area. And so just having one software platform that both of our neighbors are using, we thought would cut down on some of the, um, potential missed tests and, and there's some other reasons. But, um, one of the, one of the other reasons is we met with, um, KPUD and the person that manages their backflow program, and they were great. And had a lot of, like, very happy to help us get set up with Vepo and do some things to avoid them everything. So, um, we thought that was good, but it, uh, is, it's a, it's a software company. They have a mobile app. Um, they're the only ones with a mobile app. Everyone else required you to go on the phone. And their mobile app actually allows you to get some information in there and then sync and update it later. So when you're in the mechanical rent of a building and you're a tester trying to fill out an online test report and you don't have internet access, it can be a little frustrating if you need that to, to complete your work. Um, as far as the Costco, this was in the budget for, uh, starting in twenty twenty-six, uh, from the water department is one of the budget items in there. Um, the way that the pricing structure works is there's a one-time implementation fee. And then every time a tester, the device owner uploads a report, they pay a ten dollar fee. And that is deducted from our annual subscription fee from them. And then at the end of the year, whatever the difference is, is what we end up paying the company. Um, I'd say the pricing structure for all three companies was set up this way where they've got a base price. And then the tester pays a portion of it and, uh, you know, your, your total is deducted from that. And in the, um, in the packet was also the service agreement for kind of a three-year contract. It was reviewed by our city attorney. Um, and yeah, I think we are interested and excited to help manage this. Um, and get this rolling next year. And as I mentioned, this is one of the final things we needed to check the box on that we were implementing a solution to get our water system plan approved by Department of Health. So I'd entertain any questions.
Good presentation, Charlie. This is one of the things that people don't understand about local government. It's kind of the sum of the stuff that we have to do. So, uh, very good. Okay. Who's first? Mr. Eckert and then Mr. McVeigh.
Um, I just want to add, so you had the cost for the software, but you pointed out, we don't have anybody certified to conduct the tests right now. Um, so this gets us a tool place. Um, but is there gonna then still need, are we gonna need to outsource the tests for a while or are you gonna need, or are we coming back, we'll get it?
Yeah, I didn't explain that very well. Um, so if you are a business owner, you have a backflow device, you'll get a letter from the city saying we're implementing Vepo. It's a, it's a program. Here's your number. Um, and then you'll start getting annual reminders to say your device is out of compliance and it's your responsibility to hire a tester and upload a report.
Okay.
Um, and that is how our current code, if you look at the PMC, that's how it currently reads is they need to supply us with the report from a certified tester, um, saying that their devices have been tested and meet and are acceptable, basically.
Okay. So we're not conducting the actual testing. Um, what about, I mentioned like the enforcement of the fact that whether or not they get the test done? Is that potentially a fall in code enforcement or is that something out of Public Works that'll be? I'm just kind of thinking ahead to maybe staffing this program once we have this in place.
Well, and I'd say, um, excuse me, um, I think until we get the program running, it'll be a lot of, hey, you're out of compliance letters, which the sop, one of the, one of the aspects of the software is you can generate a list of out of compliance, print off a bunch of letters and send them out. Um, right now we, if we get a test report, that's great, but we don't know if we don't get a test report necessarily because we don't have a, a system to actually kind of quantify that, except for Ryan going through a spreadsheet and trying to update it manually. Um, some other jurisdictions do have modified their ordinance a little bit, um, to say something like, if you get three warning letters and you're a month out of compliance or three months out of compliance, we're going to go to our list of, of certified testers and, and have them do the test. And then, uh, we'll add, add the charge to your bill. Um, I don't think we want to implement that out of the gate because we want to get the program rolling and, you know, kind of ease into it a little bit. Um, but that is something that other jurisdictions turn to.
Mr. McVeigh.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Charlie. Um, I am one of those people with the residential backflow device on my irrigation system. Um, remind me, how often would, uh, would the test be required?
Is it annual, annually?
It is annually, huh?
Yeah.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the state requirement? It is?
Yeah.
It seems awfully frequent. Okay. Thank you.
I know, trying to keep our water supplies.
I understand.
So, okay. Any other questions for Charlie? Seems like a no-brainer, Charlie.
Yes, consent agenda.
Cool. Public Works will be very excited. And Brooks will be excited too.
Good work.
Cool. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you, Charlie.
Okay, so now we're gonna jump to letter H, which is the final twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, um, mid biennium budget amendment presentation.
The backflow, do you have a backflow?
I'm not on public water. I've got a well. Most valuable thing on my property. Get a really good well.
Good evening. Debbie from the finance department with our city administrator Gelder here to support us and go through the, and hopefully one of the last, um, official discussions about the mid biennium amendment. So this is the final review. And some of the changes that have been, um, put in, and we've went over them a couple of times before. So the wages and benefits have been updated. Um, we still are waiting on one, a couple of, um, benefits such as L and I to come in. So those could change a little bit, but we can also capture them next year. We, we, we budget for an increase. Um, we projected the budgets to coincide with the updated CIP, the City Improvement Plan. We updated the transfers to reflect the CIP projects and also a couple of the tax revenues that were based on, um, tax, sending money to our reserves, our parks and our streets. Those were updated to meet those increased revenues. Um, we also updated our contractual obligations. The cities agreed to those contracts, so we build those in. Updated the revenue projections. We talked about the B and O tax revenues coming in a little higher than we anticipated. Um, we, we put in the parking revenue, which is anticipated to start the parking program in June. And then also the traffic cameras, as we know, have been coming in a little bit higher. And all three cameras have been put into place for twenty-five, so that revenue will be reflected in, um, our best, our best estimate for twenty-six.
Cameras are not flock.
Correct.
No flock cameras. Okay. Thank you.
Um, we also are continuing to update what will be in your final ordinance adoption are the final, um, recommendations that are put before council tonight that we've preliminarily agreed to, but a few more discussion points are beginning coming up. Um, so the fun, and then the reclassification of positions, those are, might be a little different than the dollars we have in there because those are going through the human resources department to look at our comparables and job descriptions and making sure they're placed fairly, fairly on our wages. And that will also be captured in those. Um, additional requests for consideration. We'll pull up the three column approach in just a moment. Um, you went through everything and what has been discussed and, um, brought forward outside of that process is the boardwalk. Um, was questioned whether to allocate the hu, the half a million dollars with wanting a little bit more description. Um, what I heard from a couple of council members is they felt comfortable coming forward and recommending a hundred and fifty thousand, which would get them through the permitting process. I did hear back from a council member McVeigh, which will come back into discussion. And he has now talked to our public works director and feels comfortable in increasing that to making sure that we're starting with some of the design and also the engineering, um, the permitting process for it and keeping us eligible for some possible grants and fundings and protecting that boardwalk. Um, there's, we're still looking at the question of whether we're, um, funding, the additional funding for KETA for five thousand dollars. They have current funding of ten thousand. That would increase them to fifteen thousand. And the Western Washington, um, small business development community for the ten thousand dollars request has been a lot more, um, verbal interaction with them. And the council, we're going to discuss that and you guys can provide whether the recommendation to provide that funding or not. Um, one request that has been added that was never talked about in the past is council member Stern, um, or Mayor-elect Stern, um, is interested in the city again joining the National League of Cities, um, for a membership dues. And that's about eighteen hundred dollars. And then what that dues also would allocate is that would intend, um, the intention of attending two annual, um, workshops that they have or conferences. One is in Washington DC every year to talk to your federal legislatures and the other one rotates from city to city. So we've added those costs in. And when we get to that three column approach, I will let him address those individually. So looking at where we're at right now is our operating revenues, our operating expenditures. Um, again, that five million dollars in twenty-five, that is substantially higher than what we'd normally see. And that is because that has the transfers built into it and we transfer money over for capital projects such as the Nordic cottages, uh, cottages and the purchase of the park land that we've attached to the perk.
Deb, I'm sorry. Can you just increase the size of the type a little bit? Uh, I've had a couple of complaints from people trying to read it at home on their television.
Unfortunately, this one is on a PowerPoint, so I can't.
I tried.
When I get to the spreadsheet, I definitely can increase it, which should have replicated these numbers. Um, so if you look at our, our fund balance, some of them are restricted, some of them are council assigned. And so what that does is that does leave us a fund balance and it does leave us in compliance with our financial management policy, pretty close to the two months of operating cash.
Deb.
Yes.
Just pause right there. Go back.
Yep.
Not to the dogs.
Oh, I thought we all liked dogs.
Is the implication that we're, I'm not gonna go.
There we go. I was getting there. Sorry.
The, just for clarity on the financial management policy, it's two months and twelve percent, or it's two months, or it's twelve percent. Can you explain that a little bit more detail for all of us?
Yeah, there's a little bit of variance in there. Um, what they, what the policy is, is to prepare your budget and to make sure that you are planning to have at least twelve percent of your fund balance match your operating revenues.
Okay.
The financial management is what we continue to operate and, and go throughout the year and to make sure that we have two months of operating cash on hand. Um, we try to prepare the budget and stay pretty close to that two months because that is the target.
So is two months policy or is that best operating practice of the fiscal department?
Yeah, it's a financial management policy. They both, both of those parameters are.
So I guess just, just point that out. We're effectively, if this twenty-six executes as you've outlined there, we will hit basically at our two months limit at the end of the time.
Correct. If we spend everything accordingly, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And that's something that, you know, as we go through the retreat, we might want to talk about bumping up that twelve percent where the closes the gap a little bit more. But that's a policy decision for council. And so, um, that is just a quick overview of where we're at. And then we wanted to move on to the, um, the next steps is we're going to get the recommendations finalized for the additional funding tonight. And then we will bring that forward in your, um, ordinance on the seventeenth that adopting fund level.
Like the dogs.
Um, that was not intentional. I just thought the picture was cute. So, so.
Okay, so is there any, any questions about what Deb has presented? Any questions?
Okay. So let me, if I can find the mouse. There we are. And I think I need to stop sharing and share again, don't I?
Yep.
I'm getting the hang of this. So here we are. And, um, I can make that a little bigger, maybe, hopefully. Is that, is that better helpful?
That, that works.
So looking again at where we're at is, uh, the twenty-five and the twenty-six, not much is changing in twenty-five that we're really, we're really talking about. We're, we're pretty much focusing on most of the changes in twenty-six. And so you can see up above here is, this is our beginning balance and this is the operating exclusive of your restricted revenues. Your, um, revenues, the operating revenues and your operating expenditures, which does include your transfers, projecting that we are going to be ending with the fund balance and the positives for the operating. Um, but definitely seeing that your operating revenues projected are not supporting your operating expenditures. The amendments that we've made to the revenues, um, from these numbers is again, we talked about bumping up the property taxes. That's consistent with what the county assessor has and what the council have passed for their levy. The B and O taxes, I still think it's a little conservative, but we bumped them up because we're still trying to get the full year of transactions and also taking into account the possibility of the B and O ordinance, which you will talk about approving next, I hope. Um, parking rec fees, these are just, um, most of these have been offset by your expenditures changing. And, um, our Parks and Rec Director looks at these numbers very carefully and he looks at them in June. And, um, as those numbers change throughout the year, it looks like we probably are going to exceed those revenues reductions that he's planned. But we are still going forward with those numbers as that we visited in July. Um, your grants, these are your criminal justice grants. And the big one in twenty-six is because the HHH grant runs from July first to June thirtieth. And when we prepared for the twenty-six budget, we didn't know what was going to be, um, what we were going to receive for grants. The good news is we have now, um, we now feel comfortable that we've received those grant funds. And so we've increased the revenues and the expenditures have been reflected in that increase. Um, as we talked about, the raised grants were removed from the general fund. We moved it to paths and trails. And then, um, the traffic infractions, you have a much more active police force out there and those traffic infractions are reflecting that. And the big number that we've talked about are the camera revenues because now we will have, um, all three cameras active in twenty-six. And they are bringing in a little bit more revenue than we anticipated. and they are bringing in a little bit more revenue than we anticipated. If we look at the, we removed just the transfers allocating for Oith Avenue. That's been moved out a year. The parking fees, that's putting into the parking that we talked about is July. And then also reducing for the difference for the assigned balance because as we talked about is council wants to use the revenues that we are bringing in for parking, less the expenditures for the service of the contractor and allocating that and assigning that fund balance to make downtown parking improvements. So that's why I've removed those is allocating those funds for that specific purpose as council has intended. You know, the rages and benefits, again, that's a little bit of a moving target, but we feel pretty comfortable with this projection right now. And the reason for the decrease is when we projected in 24, 425 and 26, we had a much higher retirement rate that we were contributing. And also this, we've included that reduction and also some of the benefits that have come in a little less than we anticipated. We've put in there for cash outs and just changes in those two years that have occurred. Those do not right now include any of the additional funding that we're talking about in the new program request or the new request for funding. The mayor's, the city administrator, we brought the city administrator and then built wages and benefits, but not a lot of operating revenue. And so we looked at really closely and looked at the mayor's budget and the city administrator's budget and distributed and with a little net of a net increase, primarily for training and travel and just some of those things that are associated with, with everything. The jail cost for many, for several years, we're running much under the budget. So we reduced that budget quite a bit in 25 and 26. And now the, the bed rates have went up as well as the activity there. So we've increased that contractual obligation. The expenses related to your Triple H and then the park and rec, you'll notice that the revenue is reduced, but so did the expenditures reduce. So it's, it's a net, a net effect of washing itself out or gaining a little bit. And then again, we increased the transfer to reflect those increased revenues that we're sending to our streets funds and our park funds for capital planning. Now getting into all of these identifications for the one-time requests, I'm not going to go over them one by one unless you want to. Because we've already been through it quite a bit. And I think everything was pretty much in agreement with the exception of the boardwalk was reduced from half a million to 150,000 is what I heard from a couple of council members, but I believe under discussion now it, it's being looked at to bring that up a little bit to about 250,000 to include the preliminary design with a specific purpose as well as the permitting.
Why don't you just stop right there?
Yeah.
Okay. So council, 150?
Can we, can we, I, and I suggest we come back to that.
Yeah, because Gary's here, not here.
He just stepped away, so it would be good for him to be able to, it was his suggestion.
All right, sorry. Keep going.
That's okay. No, that's, that's good. This is your, your budget. You, you tell me when to keep going and when to stop. So that's a new request. And then here is the executive budget, which I, which Mr. Stern can talk to, and that is for the dues for the National League of Cities, about $1,800. And for the two conferences is about a $6,600 in registration fees and travel. And if you want to talk about that now, or if you want to come back, because we also want to talk about the, the KITA and the WWU. Okay. So he's back right now. So, so I will let you, you divide the direction on which item you'd like to talk about first.
I'll just quickly address National League of Cities. We've periodically been members. And then we drop out and it depends on budget and pred election, but in order to fully participate at the full level of the Association of Washington Cities, which is integrated with the National League of Cities, just like the counties were integrated with the National Association of Counties, to be able to participate at that high level, the executive level. And there's been benefits to us. In part, my appointment to the Public Works Board reflected the full participation with the AWC. And I think it's valuable to the city. I think it's pretty self-evident on that level. And I would much urge it for next year and we can evaluate based on the end of next year, whether to continue or not. There's no obligation involved in that.
It's up to you guys. It's not my, not my budget.
I would say I think the due budget for the dues. But as far as the travel, we just got an update from Finance on where our travel spending for this year was. And we only spent 11,000 out of 22,000 as a total council. I know I will probably be traveling, doing less travel and training next year than I did this year because a number of my trainings were associated with getting my advanced CML. I've completed that, so I don't have, I'm not going to be doing some of the same trainings. We only have one turnover in council. So I anticipate some of the travels. I think we'll have a little bit less training and travel than we did in the previous year. So I, I think our existing travel budget probably can absorb that 6,600 without specifically budgeting a separate line item for it.
Yeah, that's no different than my attitude about the capital projects where we're looking capacities. I'm more interested in capacities than I am in line item allocation, as long as the Finance Department and the City Administrator are comfortable with that approach.
That's fine with me. What we would do is we would move it from the legislative travel budget to the executive because as far as the state accounting manual requires, we have to, we have to allocate those funds or spend the funds where they're used. So it's all bottom line in general fund. You're absolutely correct. We'll just move the budget to the right function.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just want to ask a question since I manage the council's budget. There are some council members that just attending two conferences are going to eat up your travel and training that's allocated. So as long as everyone's okay knowing you're giving that up for, to, to move it over to executive.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that, Ryan?
When you attend the two conferences, Action Days, and then the annual AWC conference, that, that does eat up a lot of your training and travel individually. So I don't know, just want to make sure you're comfortable. You're taking from legislative and giving it to executive.
Yeah, I, I, I support the National League of Cities. I don't have an issue with that. And I guess I would leave it to staff to recommend the, the best way to handle it. As Rick pointed out, we're not using all of the training and travel budget now. And so whether we, how we move it around, I don't really have a big issue with that. So I, I would support it however we want to handle it. Or we, can we move on to other things or we want to talk about this some more?
My suggestion is we can definitely move, we can increase the budget by the dues and we can move the budget from the legislative to executive. But if everybody decides to go to a conference, we can come back to council and ask for additional funding. Does that work? Okay.
That sounds appropriate.
Okay. Just, I just don't want to lock anybody else off from not being able to attend a conference of fear of overspending a budget. So as long as we have that flexibility, which is why we have budget amendments, that might be the best.
The council will have a probably a much looser budget now. Okay. So there probably will be extra money in the council budget.
Okay. In terms of, appropriate to talk about KITA and the Small Business Development Center now?
We, yeah, we can do what, yeah, we can go that way.
Oh, you want to talk the boardwalk? Okay. All right. Thank you. I'm sorry. I, I needed to step out for a moment. The boardwalk. I, I know I questioned where it fell within our priorities compared to our rather long list of other capital projects, including several that have been on the list for some time that have gone unfunded. But in, I've had some further conversations with Diane Linius. I've heard the discussion among my colleagues, including Ms. Livdahl, who's going to die on the hill for the boardwalk. And I have, I did. Ed had reached out to Representative Nance and Brian McConaughey are our Legislative Relations Contractor. And Greg expressed an interest in talking with us about perhaps putting some funding in for the boardwalk in the state capital budget. As happenstance would have it, Representative Nance reached out to me a week or two after that. Interaction with Ed and others on the matter and, and Greg asked if he could have a coffee meeting with me to talk about some things. So I did use that opportunity a week or so ago, right before Thanksgiving with Representative Nance to take him down to the boardwalk. We did a site visit of the boardwalk. We talked about some of the challenges and a next step of having a more in-depth site visit with engineering to talk about the needs. And he expressed his support for helping us with the capital budget request. And I'm even more aware of, you know, how, how permitting on things over water go. If we wait too long, we may miss the opportunity. So I'm here saying I'm not an either or guy. I'm a yes, let's do this and other things guy. Because I think it is a top priority compared to some of our other needs. So.
What are we looking at?
So Mike, yeah, my question is on, on the budget amount. I know initially we had 500,000. I personally wanted to make sure that we had enough set aside best case estimate for permitting and design. My understanding is what we have in here now is really just for permitting. And then we could come back and do a budget amendment for design. I have some concerns about that because stuff happens along the way. And I would hate for us to have a need in some other area and that we take those funds and not be able to fulfill a budget amendment later on. So I don't know what the right number is here. I might be looking, I'm certainly looking to staff for a suggested number in terms of what it might cost for permitting and design. I had thrown out the idea of $250,000.
$250,000.
Total for both?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
Josh, Diane?
I didn't hear the number. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's definitely would cover it. I, we would be happy to get started with $250,000. I, I think is a very realistic number of where we could start and get dialed in estimate of really what this is going to take for construction and repair.
And I, just going back to the previous discussion right now, as presented up there, it looks like we are just barely going to be in compliance with our two-month rule for cash fund balance.
Yeah, let me update that number.
But if we go to 500, we're no longer, we go to 250, we're no longer. I'm just pointing that out from the standpoint of passing a budget that's in compliance with our policy.
As you should.
What if the amendment were part of the adjustments to the 2025 budget where there's additional fund capacity as opposed to the 2026 and then have a carryover?
So the fund balance, it doesn't matter which year you executed it, the fund balance, if you decrease it this year or next. Realistically, because of how we historically have underestimated revenues and overestimated expenditures, I don't think it's a problem. However, I think best practice, we should be budgeting to meet our, our policies. That's what I'm pointing out.
So put it at 250 and you should be okay. Right?
Yeah, I just, well, 250, the, it, it is a little bit lower than the two months of operating cash, but we, but as Councilmember Newell indicated, we could have more carryover that would take, would take care of that additional 100,000, but it's, it's your comfort level. We can address it when we, when we look at our beginning balances. But right now, right now, it definitely keeps us within the 12%, just slightly challenges the two months of operating. So.
I think that the citizens of Paulsboro would be a little upset if we didn't fix the boardwalk. Yeah. So I would, I would suggest that we make a commitment to do that.
And I don't have a problem with fixing the boardwalk, but we, that necessitates us having to prioritize and we can't do everything like most organizations in life.
I agree.
And so if this is a higher priority and I'm not debating that it might not be a higher priority than some other things that we've been talking about, because we've been adding, then we might have to not do, do everything we have on the table for 26.
Mr. Eckert?
Yeah, I, I'm still in the place I said last time, and that I don't feel I know enough about the boardwalk to make an educated decision, so I will trust our experts. Yeah. And I will just say, I, this goes back to what, what the mayor said about a canine program earlier. I think this is where we decide what our priority as a city is. And so if we feel the boardwalk is a priority, then we put the money in the budget to make sure, as Gary said, that something doesn't come up. And we do that consciously, knowing we're taking, we're going. Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, no, to build it, yes, we need, that's a whole other, much larger pot of money. So. Yeah, so.
You have the governor coming out today saying that there will be no new revenue.
He, he will only sign a reduction in spending budget.
Spending budget, yes.
So now I did, I just think this is a decision of what is our priority, kind of like you said. If we consider this a priority, we should put the money in. If we don't, then we put the lower amount. Again, I, I honestly do not feel educated enough on this to make a solid decision. So I'm, I'm going to go with the staff on this.
Okay, staff, just second, Britt. Staff, you guys can do something with 250. Are you okay with that?
Yeah, and I would just take a moment to add, we, when we did a repair a couple of years ago, we went through the permitting process for that repair. And Fish and Wildlife in that permitting process did put a requirement on us to upgrade the decking. So we are required to upgrade that decking as part of that permit. So we, we are obligated at this point to replace the decking. And so what our hope was is to not just go in there and replace the decking, but actually go in there and replace the decking and do a long-term repair to increase the life of the, the boardwalk. And so 250 would get us there to get us through the design and permitting and get a realistic number of what it's going to take to repair the boardwalk.
Okay. Britt?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it sounds like 250 is the most we're going to get in this round. I do feel mostly educated enough, having sat on the committees and gone through some of this in years past. But really, like, we're here representing our community and I can tell you there would be a mutiny and absolute devastation if that thing went away. So I don't know. You know, it just costs what it costs at some point and we have to do it. That's just true.
The thinking was quite simple. When the number was in the budget preliminarily for 500,000, would we be able to expend that money in 2026 or will we banking capacity toward a larger project? And then the question becomes, is that the approach we want to take to projects is banking money that we can't spend in the year in which it's budgeted? And so the idea wasn't to address or not address the boardwalk. It was to realistically assess what we could accomplish in 2026 and then come back in 2027 with the results in order to carry out construction, repair, replacement, whatever the idea was. So it was that simple. It wasn't saying it was or wasn't a priority. It was what could we accomplish in 2026?
To help us keep moving forward, I'm going to suggest we go ahead and change it to 250. It sounds like we have some support for that. We would still be within compliance. It was Mr. Newell's concern. Does that sound okay to everybody?
Yeah, it's within compliance, same within the 12% of the fund balance, but we'll, we'll continue to monitor cash. To make sure we're compliant.
All right.
And then the other questions, so we addressed this and, and I believe we're, we're hoping to absorb that. So we would take that out, right? We're just going to move it from one pocket to the other, pay the dues. And then the other items were for the, for KITA and for the WWU. I'm trying to find out where that was. Sorry.
Yeah, if I could, if I could speak to those from, in my opinion, they're both very worthwhile. They're important. So I, I am in support of the additional $5,000 for KITA. I think Joe Morrison and his team do a great job with the updates that they give us in terms of their activities. And they've been, they, they spoke in detail about their work with vibe co-works here in our community and supporting the Mac, Matchstick Labs program that helps budding local entrepreneurs and launching businesses and coaching business startups right here in our community as well as other things. So I think that's really important to do and things we can't do on our own. So I support the $5,000 additional for KITA. I support the $10,000 for the Western Washington University Small Business Development Center for the same reasons. Just, you know, one little, one example. Ed and I attended the, the ribbon cutting for the new Indigo Plum store downtown. Owner Megan Martin was able to purchase that building, expand her business. She spoke quite passionately to that event, that the importance of that Small Business Development Center in helping her work with Key Bank to retain a small business loan as well as some business coaching that helped her. as well as some business coaching that helped her expand that business. And I'm sure there's many other examples that we could point to. So I think it's a very small amount of money, given the budget we're looking at. So I support the ten thousand dollars for the Small Business Development Center.
Mr. Eckert, go ahead.
Yeah, so I said before, and one of the reasons I want to talk about this first is we are going to talk about changing our revenue from the BNO. And I see the reasoning for that, and I think I've heard enough of you say that you support it, so I feel pretty confident it's going to go forward. But for me, the mental balance in that is that if we're going to reduce our revenue, that we need to reduce our spending. So I'm looking for the areas to do that. I see this fifteen thousand dollars as an area to reduce our spending. It does, it's not in any way a value judgment on what they've done for us. It's simply if we're going to reduce our, our revenue draw, then we reduce our, our, our spending. But if I, I mean, even looking at the letter they sent, Small Business Center, in five years, they said they helped a hundred and forty eight businesses. That's, that's two and a half a month. Do they need a dedicated office in our city to help two and a half businesses a month? I don't know the answer to that, but it makes me go, okay, well, maybe then we need, that's a place to save money. So I, 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 I would say keep it, the city administrator recommended not putting it on there. I would go with that endorsement. I feel that I'm going to be overruled, but to me, if we're going to say we don't need them extra money from, you know, and I'll just say, I used the word windfall last time, which really bothered me because if we look at a tax on our citizens as a windfall, then we don't need the money. Then we should give it back. So if we don't need the money, we shouldn't be taxing it in the first place. I feel we need the money, which is why I support the BNO tax. But if we don't need that money, then not spending this fifteen thousand dollars balanced with the staff time it saves in Deb's department. To me, mentally balance is supporting changing the BNO limits. So I'm going to continue to say not adding this in. Again, it's not a value judgment on those organizations. I'm sure they do great work. They seem like they do great work, but I don't want to take money from our citizens and spend money we don't have to if we can't truly justify it.
Okay, so where are we here, folks? Can I ask a question here? Ed, did, did Kita ever come up with money for the trip to Spokane?
We did the challenge grant.
Yeah, I sat in a room and looked at a whole bunch of people and pointed my fingers at them and said, we'll do five thousand, what will you do? And we went around the room.
And it generated twenty five thousand with our five in it.
But did Kita ever pay five thousand on that?
I can't answer that directly. I don't know if it was just a cash layout. They certainly supported the activity with.
My understanding is they never came up with the money. So I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I would, I would really like to see if, ask Joe Morrison that, if, if they did come up with the money. Because it was, it was a really, it was a tough meeting and I was really a bully, to be real honest. And I pointed at a whole bunch of people and said, if you really want to have this happen, we'll do this if you guys will help. And it was, Ed's my witness, it was a tough meeting.
So what the mayor's referring to, just to refresh us, was that original point for developing the Allied Health Center, looking at Spokane as a model for what they did in the university district. Coming back, Allied Phase One was standing up, and this had to do with Phase Two and being able to build a building and have the capacity to follow through on the rest of the programs. Just the context for the conversation.
I, I would, I would really like to know the answer to that. I don't know the answer if they ever actually put any money into it. So just a question. Okay, any thoughts, people? What do you want to do? Britt?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like when these numbers with Kita and the Small Business Development Center, they're really, we're talking about very small numbers in the scheme of things, you guys, but for, for a city, for our city. But for the people, specifically with the Small Business Development Center, for the people who they help, I mean, I think that that's, that's not small potentially. That's very significant. So I, I don't, I don't really see cutting the Small Business Development Center. And then what, are we arguing over five thousand dollars for Kita? Like.
It's a.
And we do it every year.
I, I.
Tired of.
I, yeah, I.
Okay, Mister Newell?
I, I support both. I think we're in a situation where our small businesses need our help. And I think that's why we're talking about the BNO tax as a burden. I think we need a chance to do that because small businesses drive, will drive our growth going forward. I just, I think we're going to run in some tough economic, maybe not tough, but it won't be as robust as it had in the last couple of years, and people will need help.
Okay, so I'm hearing kind of a consensus is to put the most, both in. Okay, is that, I.
Show of hands there?
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm feeling that vibe, okay? Rannan, what, what do you need?
Yeah, I just need a council direction. We do talk about this every year. Is this ongoing or do you want to continue reevaluate it every year?
I think we better reevaluate it every year. Don't you?
I would like to share that the five thousand dollar increase last year for Kita was part of their one kids app, five year program of both new membership and stepping up existing membership was intended as a five year period. Of course, anybody can back out of that, but I would think at some point we need to assume a new baseline and should be five, at fifteen thousand, so we're not spending this much time spinning our wheels. And oddly, the Small Business Development Center was a commitment at the time with Western Washington University, Kitset Bank and a number of others, and we were part of that original block funding the startup. That was what mayor for a five year period, so that's been more than five years. I agree. But it had to do with commitment and these were facility locating in Paulsboro, so.
Yeah, I saw one other question about Kita. If we're not going to revisit this again, do all the cities pay the same level or is this based on population?
We're the only ones looking at stepping back from that one kids app commitment from last.
No, I'm saying is like ten thousand or fifteen, are all the cities paying fifteen thousand or is St. Bermanton paying more because they're larger than us or do we all pay the same?
No, we don't all pay the same. Bainbridge, I think, is twenty thousand.
I don't know the answer.
Okay, I, I just, I would like to know that, especially if we're not going to talk, talk about this again, because i- if we're not paying a disproportionate amount, we, I have an issue because I don't know that we're getting a proportional value. Again, I don't want to make a value judgment, but as far as Kita's concerned, how long has ours been sat empty? That is something we needed their help with, and it's still empty.
As, as a suggestion, what we could do is we could put it in the budget and you have to, and we'll help council approve the agreement and maybe Kita comes back and addresses the questions before you approve the agreement.
Okay, Mister Newell, that's a suggestion.
Yeah, I, I think we are, and I don't have nearly the runtime of the rest of you, but I am kind of tired about talking about five thousand when we throw around a million left and right. Maybe to change the conversation, if we could sometime in twenty six, schedule a panel discussion on how small businesses are doing here in the city and how we can make them approve. You know, maybe Heather from Planning, Chamber of Commerce, somebody from HDPA, Western Washington, and talk about what are the tools that are working and not working, so we have a reference point. Hey, does this stuff work or not? Or is there something else that would be better? Just to have a, a different way to talk through this, because we do seem to spend an hour on it every so often.
Okay, so I'm hearing consensus, it's, it's ten and five, that what we're, we're going to put in here. And I have no idea what they'll do next year, Rhiannon. Okay, so that's what I'm hearing right now. Okay?
I, I agree. Yeah, let's just do it this year. We'll talk about it again next year.
Were there any other points of discussion or items that you wanted to revisit?
I don't see any colors on that screen. Take that color off there, Deb. We did the eighteen hundred.
I personally, th- those were my issues. I, I personally did not have any other objections to the recommendations from the, in the city administrator mayoral column. So I, I'm, I'm good to go with the changes we've discussed tonight.
I, I'm very pleased, counsel, that you decided to do a code enforcement officer. I think it's something that's really bothered me for a long time. So I want to thank you for funding that. Okay? So I think we're go, I think we're good here. Are we good?
Yes, and so we will come back with the ordinance on the seventeenth. There'll be really no discussion. You'll just see a spreadsheet with numbers and an actual written ordinance that will be reviewed by your city attorney as well as, as the staff.
Okay.
So.
Now we're gonna go.
Thank you, everybody.
We're gonna go back to G and do the ordinance number for the business occupation and BNO tax update, and this is Deb.
So the presentation is short and sweet. We've talked about the BNO update and the model ordinance several times, so hopefully this should not be any new information. So again, the model ordinance update, the only changes are to include the new retail tax categories that have been passed through your legislature, and those are defining some of what were previously your service industries now are a considered a retail tax trade. The future update scheduled, these, they, what we had talked about possibly some other options for the zero filing, those have been pushed out by the AWC and the panel to include those in a future ordinance, and they have no date or timeline established with that. They're just trying to get through the retail changes that apparently the Department of Revenue and all the cities and the state have been struggling with. So the legal requirement for zero tax, zero returns are still in place, and these will now be an only an annual filing. So hopefully the impact will be minimal. The new retail tax categories bringing into play are the information technology, a lot of requirements for people that provide services for your IT needs, website design and development, a lot of these changes are related around technology, investigation services, temporary staffing services, those are your, your placement agencies that provide temporary staffing, advertising, still big questions related to that, what they're considering advertising as far as internet and regular, and then live presentations, and just keep in mind that will be increasing all of our departments' training costs for registration for going to conferences. So we are still proposing to stay with the standard rate of point two percent, which is point zero zero two. We're asking, we were hoping to go forward with all businesses having the same level of exemption instead of separating it to a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, which is the exemption for businesses currently collecting retail tax. It has been a point of confusion for many filers and a little bit more confusion within our department than we had intended. So that was the hope is it would make it simpler for the filers as well as the city. And so that's going into if there's any further questions, and I believe we provided both the ordinance with the red line version and the non-red line version. It has been reviewed by our city attorney and is can previously provided through the tax, the AWC tax panel to make that consistent. And so I know there's some points of discussion, I believe, Councilmember Eckert wanted to bring up is, go ahead.
I have a question. On the last one, the revenue, you had the revenue from BNO taxes being two hundred thousand. But it's two hundred thousand last year and two hundred thousand, well, this year and next year. So does that reflect this reduction?
Yes, that's why we were pretty conservative with that, with raising the projection for that increase. So it, it reflects anticipating that, but also knowing the two hundred thousand is pretty consistent. We're trying to, we're trying to get a more of historical trend. And we've had some businesses that were out of compliance and are catching up, and some of our two thousand and twenty five revenues were, were passed over to twenty six because they were filing late. We're still tracking down a couple of businesses when they're, when they're such a large corporation, we have a hard time getting to their accounting department. So.
So without this change, you would be raising this to then?
Without this change, it might, we might bring up the projection about two hundred and thirty thousand as opposed to two hundred thousand.
Mister Newell?
Yeah, just to point this out, this BNO tax started first of July in twenty four. We're still learning how it's going. The initial projections, if I remember correctly, were between six and eight hundred thousand dollars in collections.
The first year we projected about four hundred thousand because we knew it was for six months. We brought in about six hundred thousand. You're correct. And then in twenty five, we, we figured we'd bring in about, or twenty six, we figure a million, and so we're bumping that up.
Understand, but when we first, when we first voted on it, we were thinking it was six to eight hundred thousand. Since we've gotten into this, we've collecting significantly more, not like five percent more, significantly more. Even in twenty five, if I look at the last budget status report ten months in, while we budgeted a million dollars in revenue, we've collected one point one nine million in revenue. We're a hundred and ninety thousand over revenue budget in the first ten months for the twelve month period. We're going to come in probably at one point four. There's two more months to come. We've collected over, over a million dollar, over a hundred thousand dollars a month. Realistically, we're going to hit at least one, two, could hit one, four, could hit one, five.
So.
So significantly more than what we had budgeted. What we're talking about is trying to reduce the burden on our small businesses for compliance, where it's not get the bang for the buck's not there. So we've talked about this before, still think we can, need to stare at this because we need to enable our, our small businesses to be successful. And don't forget, if a small business is paying this tax, it's really getting passed on to our local consumers.
And the reason we were conservative moving forward to our twenty six projection is some of those revenues, as, as Councilmember Newell indicated, is we're still learning and trying to develop the historical trend and so posting it to the correct year. Yes, and, and probably the carryover coming from twenty five will cover that.
Well, we implement, you know, we implemented this tax, we, we really, there was no way to judge
Right.
what, you know, our total business revenue was for the city. We had no way of knowing. It's pretty amazing, frankly, that we have this little town that has so many vibrant businesses in it. Now, that being said, I'm seeing a lot of for rent signs going up, and so we have to be real careful about what we're doing with this tax. I don't have any problem with what you're saying, Doug. You know, if, if we can let the small guys off, I'm, I'm okay. But is, is a small guy a hundred and twenty thousand? Is that a small guy? Is that, is that, I mean, is that, is that, is that a small business? I mean, is it more like fifty thousand instead or sixty thousand? Seventy thousand? Hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in revenue is a pretty substantial, that, that's a pretty substantial amount of money.
We're talking about gross.
Yeah, we're talking about, we're talking about gross, so it's not net.
What people are taking home.
Yeah, but I'm thinking about all the real estate agents, and I'm thinking about.
I'm telling you it's small.
Okay, all right. I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just asking the question. What is small? Right?
I think the challenge is, is at a hundred and twenty five thousand with our twenty thousand exemption, you're paying notionally two hundred dollars a year in BNO tax, but your accountant might be getting seven or eight hundred. So the impact on the business isn't the two hundred. The impact on the business is the two hundred plus the administration to do that. So you've got the accountant, then you've got the small business having to capture the paperwork. So it is administratively heavy on the small guys to do this, and it's, it's a burden and to our staff. So I think this, back to what we had talked about, I think before, this is a chance where we show that we can learn and grow and, and be responsive to the needs of our community and see what works and goes forward. As, and, and just as a reminder, the city of Seattle just dramatically increased their exemption to seven figures on the BNO tax.
What does, what's the exemption on Bainbridge? Do you know? I believe the last time I looked, it was, I think it was about a hundred and fifty thousand. So we were pretty close to there.
All right. Okay, so if that's what our neighbors are doing, I think that that's, sounds fair. Okay? Hundred and twenty, is that, was that a suggestion?
I, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I didn't think we were going to get in tonight on raising. I'm fine with equalizing the retail and the service number to a hundred and twenty five. I didn't think we were going to get into adjusting the number tonight. I, I, I'm not ready to do that myself. I think we need to approve the ordinance as submitted. Continue to monitor where we are and bring this up in twenty twenty six with the new council and our new mayor.
Mister Eckert?
Yeah, I just, I, I still have a concern about returning certain businesses to a state of not paying tax. And you bring up the accountants, what you're, what the businesses are paying to the accountants, well, the accountants aren't paying any tax in some of these situations, because they don't collect. Well, the accountants aren't paying any tax in some of these situations because they don't collect retail sales tax. And if they don't have a physical business in our city, they're supporting you from outside the city, then they're not paying us tax. So I, I just, I don't, I, I remember the original intent was to ensure that businesses operating in the city are helping support the city. And so we are returning a certain class of businesses to not doing that. So I, I have that concern. I have voiced it many times and I tried to balance it mentally in several different ways. I have lost all those arguments. Uh, I understand that I am not compelling and you all disagree with me. I am going to support equalizing the B and O because I fear for our small businesses as well. That's the reason I didn't keep waiting to present this, what I learned at that conference. I, I think the reason that Seattle made the changes is because they got, third of their businesses are empty right now. So they're trying to keep everybody they can. Um, but I'm also going to support it because I'm, I want to help Deb's department. So I'm going to support it. I don't like the idea of what we're doing because I think it's counter to the entire intent. Not the entire intent, but a good point of why we put this in place in the first place.
Okay. So, um, any more comments and then we just bring it forward to get a vote on it.
So the intent was to bring it forward if we were consensus tonight to have it just on the consent agenda on the 10th. If it needs more discussion, um, we will have to discuss it on the 17th.
No, I, I think we're all, we're at the equalization. I didn't hear anything about raising it or discussion. We had a discussion of making both sides 125 before. Let's just go forward and, and look at it again in the future.
Okay, great. So it'll be on the consent.
Future being a year from now.
Thank you. And because we legally have to get this adopted before December 31st.
I think we're.
And so we'll put it on consent next week. And, um, I believe our city administrator will be happy to staff that because I will not be here. So thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Are we done with, with the budget? Are we good? For God's sakes, if you're not, please get with Deb before next week.
I will, I will be gone and not here next week.
Rob, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
We just don't want to, I don't want to have a budget train wreck. Okay?
Bear in mind, we have two members not here tonight. So I might encourage perhaps the city administrator to reach out to those individuals and, um, see if we can unearth any differences they may have sooner rather than later.
And our senior, and the senior accountant Larissa is here and is, is very versed on the budget. So she's here for any assistance as well. Thank you, everybody.
All right. So let's just keep moving this along. It's almost 7:30. So we have resolution number 2025 fee schedule update for past licensing fees. Let's talk about dogs and kitties.
Sorry?
I know.
Thank you. So what I have before you is a request from the Kitsap Community Society. They're wanting to increase their pet licensing fees. They have not been increased the entire time I've been your city clerk. I think the last time was in 2015. Um, they are looking to bolster their revenues to help with the increased costs associated with operating animal control. The Kitsap County Commissioners made a request to explore increases in licensing revenue to offset some of the revenue deficit while addressing the increased cost of insurance and income. Kitsap Community Society would like to make the recommendations to all municipalities regarding the increase of licensing fees. And they'd like us all to follow the sea, the same fee structure. So what you have before you is what we currently charge and then what they're looking to propose to start next year. Do you have any questions?
I have a question. Why unaltered is NAs? What, what's that mean? I mean.
That means we don't offer it.
No licensing at all to unaltered dogs?
No, no lifetime. You have to license each year because we want your pet altered.
Okay, sorry. Connect. Thank you.
Question? Um, Brianna, what, what is senior citizen permanent?
It's a permanent registration is my understanding of it. And this is what we currently have in our code.
So in some cases we showed like lifetime or something. So it's essentially the same as lifetime. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's just cheaper. Because we seniors have no money.
Good. Okay. I'll put this on the consent agenda. It will be effective at the beginning of the year.
That's easy peasy. Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Now the next one might not be, but we, we'll see fireworks ban ordinance. This is Rhiannon.
So we had our election. We had an overwhelming percentage of the voters who participated wanting to ban fireworks. Councilmember Eckert asked that this be brought up before the end of the year. That way, if it went into effect, it would be in effect for the next New Year's Eve. So I drafted an ordinance, had Emily Romanenko review it and the police chief as well. And they are in support of the ordinance as drafted. And I wanted your feedback if you'd like to move it forward for a council vote.
I'm all in favor.
Okay. Are we all good? I mean, the voters have spoken.
Yes, I am in favor as well.
Yeah, I'm in favor too. I'm just curious for my colleagues, has anybody received any feedback from anybody on this topic?
None that I can guarantee came from anybody that lives in Paul's bow.
Okay. I'm, I'm just curious. It, it was a pretty strong vote. I'm, I'm supportive of the, our, our, yes, our citizens will.
Do you want this on the business agenda or consent?
Yes, I think we should put it on the business to make sure that we capture our votes.
And I think maybe then.
Yes.
At the end of the year, because I think I'll have all of.
Yeah, yeah. I just think it's wise for something like this that we vote on it.
Yeah, I, I think we, we need to be very, very public about this in a good press release.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then when they get to weigh in and, and I, I just, so I'm just going to say it on the record. I did the math. So because we did it in a vote, because we did it on a ballot, the, uh, yeas balanced against registered voters in the city of Paul's bow. That was 29.8% voted yes. So that's almost 30% of our registered voters that voted yes, which is significantly higher than any survey poll. Anything we could have done to ask people what they wanted. If we get 30%, you never get 30% return on a survey. So, um, 30% in a vote in an off-year election, I think that's pretty good. They spoke. So.
Okay. Final thing on the workshop agenda, questions and concerns of the council, any future agenda items, council? Seeing none, continued public comment. Since the public has observed us.
Excuse me.
You guys have also, you're not public, Cap. You're a friend, you're a friend. Okay. Um, mayor and council member comments, any mayor and council member comments?
Um, I did not hear back from Suquamish as far as banners, so I don't see us doing it this year.
Okay.
Um, but shall I make a motion to adjourn out of executive session?
That would be really good.
Okay. Which will be 20 minutes.
Okay.
Seconds.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Mayor, could I get a time that you're coming back for the record, the exact time?
We're, it's 20 minutes and it's 7:30 now. So it'll be 7:50.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Well, I'll wait until we get in the room. I'm going to say something. That bothers me.